Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Agenda Setting Work Session for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024. It is 9:04 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board, to my left Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fornier and Commissioner Emily Claus, Commissioner Caroline Mahia, Commissioner Gary Edwards on Zoom. We have County Manager Leonard Hernandez and Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder here. Uh, sorry, and Assistant County Manager Josh Cummings being hidden by Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder.
And he was gone for, Assistant County Manager Rob Gelder was gone for months. You normally had a clear shot.
Yeah. All right. Public virtual attendance is available this morning on the Thurston County YouTube Channel. We have three hours locked, uh, set aside for review of this afternoon's agenda, a couple of standing items, and an executive session. So let's turn to item one, which is this afternoon's proposed agenda. 2 p.m. meeting called to order, pledge allegiance to be led by Commissioner Mahia. Approval of the agenda. We have a notation from Clerk of the Board on a couple of new items. We're going to see 3A and an item 3H moved to consent. So just heads up as we go through those. First of all, we'll have a presentation for flood awareness week.
Good morning, Commissioners Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. We will have staff from Emergency Management present this afternoon to accept and present on the proclamation.
Any questions for Amy on flood awareness week? Hearing none. We'll have opportunity for the public to address the board. County manager's update?
For the meeting, I don't have any updates, but I just wanted to note that the Deschutes Eschuary ILA is part of this agenda. Is it 3H?
3A.
3A. But there was discussion about, well, we'll get to that one. I'm sorry, Chair.
Okay. So no questions for County Manager. We'll then move to 3A, first consent item. Inter local agreement with Department of Enterprise Services for Deschutes Eschuary Project?
And as discussed in, I think, yesterday's meeting, based on the request for information from Commissioners, we would need to, this off agenda, or it's our recommendation that we move this off agenda, to give our legal team a chance to review the pending questions. Also, there's information I'll be sharing in the next little while that came up about the indemnification. The state did respond. They have some information that I'm reviewing with Travis before we share it with the Commissioners.
Okay, so we're pulling that from the agenda?
Yeah.
And I, I don't think I would want it on consent.
Gotcha.
But that's just me.
I was gonna agree.
Yeah.
Anything that's of great, uh, community interest usually doesn't look good if it's on consent because we don't get a chance to kind of present it and make a comment about it.
Sure.
So that'll be a, probably an item for the, whatever the, is 30th or 29th?
29th.
As, and it is as a department item, and in the interim, we will get updates on at least two, if not three, legal questions the board had. Commissioner Mahia?
Can we just, sorry?
Go ahead, Commissioner Mahia, and then I'll, Commissioner Fornier.
Yeah, I, I just have like questions, like on, I understand some of the legal questions that Commissioners asked, but I, I'm wondering, like, what are they specific to the ILA that we have to delay this even more?
Well, the questions are regarding the use of funding for this item. We are in the process of working with our legal team to prepare what was requested by the Commissioners, and that is a written opinion. It's gonna take, I think we got a couple of weeks timeframe, so it may not even be ready for the next agenda, but we'll work with our legal team to get it done and then present it. And I do agree that this item should be moved to a department item. I would also suggest that we invite the state to come and be one of the presenters, not put it all on Ashley's shoulders, even though it is listed, oh, it's coming from me, I'm sorry. So I'll invite the state, so it doesn't just rest on me to do this presentation. I got mixed up with an item and thought it was coming from me. I'm like, that's interesting, it's coming from Ashley. No, it's coming from me, so.
Well, you know, so I, I was one of the Commissioners that asked for the, the funded question, right? And I asked for it in, in order for it to, in a way, be parallel to this process because it's questions we've gotten. But considering that, uh, anything in relation to payments wouldn't begin until years later, we still have to go to see if even the state is going to approve this, I would propose that we move forward and work parallelly along this and, you know, kind of resolve the funding issue questions, you know, on, and that way staff is not pressured to move this forward. I just want to keep to the timelines that we've been saying, uh, in terms of the ILA, uh, and the fact that, you know, we're, one of the last jurisdictions, I believe Tom Waters approving it today too, that is going to approve this, I, I just have concerns.
Commissioner Fornier?
I, I wanted, I just wanted somebody to stipulate what those three legal questions are, just for the record.
So the, the questions that I'm tracking Commissioners are in response to the type of funding. We have two funding sources that we were looking at. We did get response back on the public health funding, that it does not fall within the scope. So we're preparing that. We can send that out as a, as a brief background information. I appreciate Rob Gelder doing the research on that with public health. The other question that's being rounded up is the use of stormwater funds. And there are different perspectives that have been sent as public comments to the board. Our, the initial perspective from our legal team is that stormwater funds can be used, but we need to get that in a written opinion, and Travis needs additional time to research that. And so it's really the board's call on whether the site moves forward or delay to get that information rounded up.
So it was type of, the legal questions were type of funding, that was basic, and then there was one?
Something about indemnification?
Oh, the indemnification question. The state came back, and I'll summarize the, the information they sent, which is they don't have the authority to indemnify us. That's a quick summary. I've sent the information that Ann Larson sent, and I really appreciate her follow-through. I think she sent it yesterday. Travis, just to review that and then to provide his perspective as we send that information onto the board.
I, I, I would like the funding identified, you know, I, I will call it the Hamburglar argument. I'm, I'm not comfortable with. I, I'd like, you know, so I, I would personally like to have all that sussed out and squared away.
Yes, Commissioner Edwards?
And I'm just gonna echo Commissioner Fornier's concerns. Really, there is absolutely, I think it's actually irresponsible to move ahead when there are questions yet to be answered. We can't take care of our own employees when it comes to paying them adequately. We need to make darn sure there is a funding source available that will be legal and won't succumb to some challenges at some later date.
Okay, so it's...
I haven't heard an argument that it, that the timeline, we're messing up any timeline.
Right.
Is that, am I off on that?
Commissioner Mahia, go ahead.
Yeah, so the timeline was set forth in basically everything presentation that DES has come and given to us, right? They half-presented a timeline to us, uh, each and every single time, and kind of let us know where we're at. And the fact of the matter is, like, we're, the last jurisdiction, like, I, once again, this is not new. Like, this has been discussed, and I, I'm very frustrated that we keep just kicking this down, right? And again, the funding question, that was my question that I asked. Uh, and it was specifically to kind of try to get ahead of some public perception that we weren't planning ahead, and that's why I asked them. It was not to delay this process, but instead to start looking at different avenues as we were moving forward with the ILA. Uh, the state needs the ILA signed by all the jurisdictions because they have to start getting ready to put their proposal ready to go forward to the state. And so they were wanting this fairly soon, kind of in the same timeline as the other jurisdictions. And again, Tom Waters is approving theirs today. We're going to be the ones to, to continue to delay this process. And this is, I have, I have other points, but that's, the timelines have been set by DES at all of the previous board presentations.
I have a question for County Manager, I guess.
Yeah.
The executive session is related to this topic. Are we gonna hear something there that's gonna bear on answering any of the questions? I mean, obviously, we're not gonna have the written opinion in our hands, but I don't know that that's a requirement for me personally. So what are we intending to address at the executive session?
The executive session isn't necessarily about the funding component.
Okay.
So that's not part of the conversation.
Okay.
It has to do more with just awareness of, of how the county should position itself with potential future litigation.
Okay, um, and in terms of, okay, Commissioner Claus, did you have anything you wanted to add? I mean, I'm not really sure where we're at here on, in terms of keeping it on today's agenda.
Um, I feel the same way as Commissioner Fornier and Commissioner Edwards. I'm, I really do, like, hear, hear Commissioner Mahia, and she says she's frustrated with the delay because I know we've all felt that way about certain projects, and this is an important one. I haven't heard any Commissioners say they don't support an eschuary. I think we all understand that this is important. Um, but as far as the funding mechanisms, it's kind of similar to the issues like the courthouse, or like Jazzcom, or big issues that we've had a long history on. Um, I'm still relatively new. Commissioner Fornier and I, you know, are coming up on a year, and we don't know the history of these major projects. And so I would ask for a couple weeks to still continue to try to just digest the legal opinions as they come in. I really do want to see the written legal opinion from Travis, um, for the same reasons I've stated. Um, I think it's important to, for us to really fully understand, like, what we're doing. Um, and if we're setting ourselves up for potential litigation down the road, which, based on the comments we've heard from the public, I think that it's a possibility if we don't get these questions answered before we sign it.
Okay, so there's three votes, it sounds like, for removal today, so that will be what happens. I guess my question, I'm in a slightly different position. I mean, I don't really care what's in, I mean, I think it's good to have it in writing, um, on a question like this. That's not gonna hold up my vote, you know, if the writing takes an extra two weeks or whatever. What I want is the substance of the opinion, which I think I know because we heard it a couple of years ago. But what I would like to have in combination with an update on that stormwater opinion is a look by the board at the stormwater fund, like, the, the capacity, the magnitude of what's being asked versus what the, how much money comes into that fund every year. I mean, if it's 100% of our stormwater fund, you know, and that turned out to be the only source of funding, we, we need to know that versus which 1% of the stormwater fund, and very manageably, um, uh, you know, navigated financially, those are two totally different situations. And so I would, in combination with the legal opinion, I would like to see from our budget team or whoever is the right person to just kind of walk us through the financial plan of the stormwater fund and kind of like, so we can see the, the scope of what's being asked versus what comes in. So that's where I'm at, and I, and I'm, I would very much be personally not wanting to go past the 29th of October on that because I know it takes a long time for lawyers to put legal opinions in writing, and, and for me, I'm not necessarily requiring that before I would take a vote, but I would like to nail down this last piece on the funding.
Gotcha. Yeah, we can do that. I think the analysis of the stormwater fund, what I would also just add that we will do is do a lookout based on the inflator of the payment, how we can predict that's gonna impact the fund outs to the entirety of the payment schedule.
We do that every year when we go through all of our funds and stuff, so it shouldn't, that shouldn't be a big lift. But I just think it's to tie, to tie the bow here on financial responsibility. That's probably what needs to be presented. Okay, so it sounds like we've got 3A off to at least, or on the proposed agenda for October 29th. The public, I'm sure, um, should listen to this conversation because I'm sure we'll all be getting, or I will be getting many phone calls this, later today. I don't need those phone calls. I am committed to this project.
You wanna give your phone number publicly right now?
Listen carefully to what we're doing here. All right, let's go.
Absolutely. And I, you know, I was approached several times by my constituents all along my district about this project. Uh, and I will refer them back to this conversation, and, um, they can, we're direct their questions to the three Commissioners who have decided not to add this to the agenda today.
All right. So 3B, Community Planning and Comp Development, set up public hearing on the agricultural zoning update. CPA 16, Ashley Arai, I believe, is making her way forward.
Good morning, Commissioners. This one is mine. Um, and this is to set up public hearing, um, on the long-term agriculture zoning update in response to an appeal that was received by Futurewise a few years back. We have had a recent briefing on this. Happy to answer any questions at this point. Otherwise, we will move forward with noticing the hearing, letting all of our stakeholders know that it's happening, um, for November 19th.
Have we had new communication from Futurewise on this issue?
No, we have not.
Thank you.
And I, just one other thing I did want to point out, that we are planning to include communications around the new opt-in clause that was discussed with the Commissioners. Opt-in clause. So if there are any stakeholders that have been involved in this process throughout the last few years, they would be able to opt into the long-term agriculture zone, um, and the schedule should be able to accommodate getting that included in the package for this year.
Okay, so that's a public hearing on November 19th. Um, can I ask you, while you're here, Ashley, on this kind of general topic of the comp plan, this is one of the comp plan once-a-year things?
Mm-hmm.
And there's two other projects?
There are.
And are they gonna be, there's a public hearing, at least on one of them, or both of them?
Yeah, so the Grand Mound West projects.
Will those have a public hearing?
Yep.
And we'll discuss where those stand after that.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Okay. Um, any questions for Ashley? Further questions on ag zoning update, public hearing? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
That takes us to 3C, Human Resources Resolution Setting 2025 Benefit Contributions. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. So the, this resolution sets the highest standard plan for medical towards employee contributions towards medical plans in 2025. Do we have any questions?
Questions, there is, there was a briefing that the public is interested, where you went through all the options. This was the staff recommended option to kind of keep employees in the most consistent position as to where they stand. In fact, it actually reduces contributions
For quite a few different plans.
For the biggest group of employees. So that's the summary. Any questions from the board? Nope? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
3D, which will, these will all be renumbered this afternoon, but 3D on the draft agenda is IT, networking equipment purchase for the courthouse.
Good morning. Sherry Ilk, IT Director. I actually have 3D, E, F, so I've got three of them.
Just the chair.
I'll get cozy. Um, so they're all, these are all maintenance requests. We are requesting permission to, um, purchase 20 Fortinet switches and 24 wireless access points for the courthouse. This will replace outdated equipment, and it will also replace the uninterruptible power supply, the UPSs, in each of the network rooms. This is in our rates. We collect money every year for our infrastructure replacements. Okay. Uh, the next one is a renewal agreement for our internet and data connectivity to five of our, of our offices. Um, it is a two-year, 24-month contract. Each connection costs about $460 a month, and this is for five of them. So the total cost is, for two years, $55,273.
Questions on the second item? We have talked about that one, is why we had discussion last, uh, agenda setting on why we need to do this despite the new system coming on board next year?
Amanda? Yeah, exactly. This one is to approve the renewal of the Amanda permitting software. Um, we're not quite done with our SLA implementation, so we must keep paying for the existing solution. $110,748.
Commissioner Edwards? I guess because this is such technical and complicated stuff, uh, could Sherry give us just a, a little history? I mean, we're kind of zooming over this, like, thing is a-okay.
The Amanda one?
Yeah, the whole, all of these. I mean, they're, you know, they're, uh, technical issues that just didn't come up yesterday. And I think the public, if they, they knew that we've been working on this stuff for years.
Sure.
This is a accumulation or continuation.
Okay.
Could you just make mention of that to, uh, so those folks that are viewing might understand it?
Absolutely.
What we're doing here, because we're sitting here like bumps on a log, not asking questions because we've been briefed on this and been involved in it.
Is there a second review? Right, this is our second review, Commissioner, and she went into detail the first review, but you can give a high-level summary.
Absolutely.
I mean, just really, I mean, like, one minute, you know, just, just, uh...
So, um, a lot of the stuff that is in IT has to be replaced or renewed annually. Um, the internet and data connections, that is a contract that we have so that our, um, offices can have connection to the internet, and that is a two-year contract. Um, the networking equipment, that networking equipment is good for about five to seven years, and then it has to be replaced. So part of our ongoing, um, collection every year in our rates is the money to replace our networking equipment. That's pretty typical, five to seven years. Sometimes we like to hold on it, onto it for longer, but that's not good practice because if it fails, it affects everybody. And then Amanda, um, we are in the process of replacing the Amanda software. Um, we pay maintenance on every, one of our large applications every year, and, um, it tends to go up every year, of course. Uh, we're in the process of replacing Amanda, so, uh, the last time I had this approved, it was only for two years of maintenance, and since we're not done implementing the replacement system yet, then we need to continue to pay for licensing and maintenance for the existing solution that we're using.
And I guess I'd just say that I've, we've been either talking about or working on this for well over five years, trying to accomplish this, and so.
Well, yeah.
Probably gotta know this, just kind of the cost of doing business in the modern technology age.
Absolutely.
Commissioner, I'd agree with you that most items that come before the board by the time they're here, it's like the tip of the iceberg of months, if not years of work. Um, the ILA is a great example. It was mentioned 10 years.
Yeah.
In, in the process, so we really appreciate staff's ability to march these things forward to the board for final consideration and ultimately your decision.
Thank you. Did I skip G? Or no?
No.
Sorry, I got lost there on the three items. All right, you got them covered.
Thank you.
Okay, then 3G is Public Works Designation Letter for Direct Negotiation with Confederated Tribes of the Sheilis Reservation. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, County Manager, or County Manager, Board of County Commissioners. Um, we discussed this item in detail last week, but a high-level summary is, we're requesting permission for the Public Works Director to negotiate right-ofway with the Sheilis tribe. Um, we're beginning the right-ofway phase of a project on Old Highway 99 to improve the intersections of Old Highway 99 and Sargent, as well as Old Highway 99 and 201st. Um, the Bureau of Indian Affairs requires, um, the agency's legislative body, yourself, to authorize Public Works, um, Director to negotiate right-ofway on behalf of the county. So again, asking permission for Director Walker to negotiate right-ofway for the Old Highway 99 project.
Questions from that? Nope, Craig, thank you. Uh, you got the next one?
I got the next one.
Next one is 3H. Show them on track here. Lit, uh, inter local agreement with City of Yellum for the sale of anti-icing materials for road operations.
Per our discussion last week, this was moved to the consent agenda today. Um, Thurston County Public Works... Thurston County Public Works Road Operations, we produce a lot of anti-icing material for use for our winter road operations. As quantities allow, if we, we look out for ourselves first, but if we have additional quantities, then we will make them available for purchase to other local agencies in the area. This is definitely not the first ILA that includes anti-icing operations. We have agreements with Rainier, we have agreements with Tenino, Tomwater, Aberdeen. I think, not to toot our horn, but I think we're probably one of the bigger anti-icing material manufacturers in the local area at least, besides the state, obviously.
Our major seller, we're like selling de-icing and up the price. Soon as we corner the market, we're going to double the price on everybody.
Pass on inflationary costs.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's what we'll say.
All right, any other questions for Matt? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Department Item 4A, Public Health and Social Services Community Development Block Grant, Public Service Contracts.
Good morning, Commissioners. Alex First, Affordable Housing Program Manager. I am here today to ask you to approve six public, community development block grant, public service contracts. So every year, we get from the Department of Housing and Urban Development, from their community development block grant, CBPG program, we get funding to provide low-income households and individuals with a variety of services. So this year, the City of Tomwater selected six public service agencies to provide low-income services to folks in Tomwater. And these contracts that we are asking you to allow us to execute are listed in the AAS. So these are for Boys and Girls Club, Catholic Community Services, Family Education and Support Services, Senior Services for the South Sound, Thurston County Food Bank, and together. The total funding from these contracts amounts to $184,397.
Any questions for Alex? Nope, thank you. Next up is 4B, Home Visiting Services Account Nurse Family Partnership Amendment to Contract. On that last one, could that be a consent agenda item, since it's, you know, we're just approving what Tomwater requests to do with their funds?
Yeah, I think it'd be great.
Thumbs up from Alex. I think, Commissioner Mahia, any objection to consent on that item?
No, that's fine.
Okay, so we have concurrence on that.
All right, Clerk, you got that one?
Go ahead, Gretchen, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and County Managers. My name is Gretchen Teller. I'm the Division Director for Community Wellness, and I am here regarding our amendment to our inter-local agreement with Washington State Department of Children, Youth, and Families. This has been an ongoing funding source that we've had for a nursing partnership for a number of years. This amendment will bring in another $1,319,865.98. It funds community health nurses to serve a total of 162 families through the nursing partnership in Thurston, Mason, and Lewis Counties. The breakdown of that is 61 families in Mason County, 55 families in Thurston, and 46 families in Lewis County.
Anything for Gretchen?
Hoping it's consent, like.
Consent? It's a big, it's a big amount, but it's a, I guess amendment to our existing services.
Yeah, it's, it's just normal business that we do on a regular basis.
Yeah, I'm open to that. I guess I'll just say real quick, I had highlighted this to make comments tonight, just to make sure I give kudos to the program. When I did the ride-along, it was really informative and really eye-opening. And I just wanted to thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, I'm fine either way.
Is there approval to move it to consent? Yep. All right, seeing nods and yeses.
That works.
Great, okay, you got it. Thanks, Gretchen. Okay. 4C, WSTA Grant Number 6, sorry, K5572 for Emergency Food Response Network. And Alicia's online. Alicia, good morning.
Good morning. Alicia Hughes, Public Health and Social Services and Population Health. Gretchen attended for me last week and answered some questions about this grant, this pilot grant. But I'm here to ask for approval on the Washington State Department of Agriculture contract for the amount of $93,817.87. And Thurston County Public Health and Social Services received direct contact from Washington State Department of Agriculture to do this procurement and distribution of emergency food for hunger-relief organizations here in Thurston County. And the goal is that at least 50% of the funding is spent on the purchase of food, and that will be done through some sub-receipients, and then supporting some of the emergency long-term preparedness work as well. Happy to answer any questions that you have.
No questions. See you this afternoon.
Okay.
Public Works 5A, Resolution to Abolish Utility Funds Due to Utility Consolidation.
Good morning. Jennifer Walker, Public Works Director. This is an item, as discussed last week, as a result of the board doing a utility consolidation at the end of last year and moving our seven funds into one water utility and one sewer utility. We have the existing old funds that need to be abolished, and so this is a resolution for the board to abolish those funds.
Funds are like accounts, right?
Yes.
For any dollar bills.
We are not. The actual dollars have been transferred to the new funds, yes.
Any questions for Jennifer? Okay. Next up then?
Yep.
5B, Resolutions to Apply for Grants from the RCO for Burford Park Trail System.
Yes, so as, one of the requirements for RCOs when applying for grants is that we have legislative authority to do that, and so we are applying for $150,000 Regional Trails Program Grant and a $200,000 Nine-Highway and Off-Road Vehicle Activities or NOVA Program Grant. There is a 20% match, and the NOVA does not require a match. So we're asking for a board approval to apply for the grants. We have not received the grants. This is just to apply.
Chair. Yes, sir. By any chance, could possibly both A and B be moved to consent? The reason I say that is we've been working on the consolidation of these fundings for a couple of years now. We've had quite a bit of public ability to, for the public to be aware of it. And those communities are, that are directly affected are certainly aware of it. And this, applying for a grant, I mean, I just, do we, is there some legal requirement that we have to have that in the position it is here versus consent?
No, there's no legal requirement.
So, I mean, it'll help.
We're just showing that we support their application.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which we do, but I just
It's approval of the resolution, so whether that's in consent or it's under a department item.
So.
Absolutely.
Okay.
That wouldn't hurt your feelings.
No, I would not. I mean, I would sacrifice having it moved to consent.
And the Commissioners, I think what, Clerk and I are kind of learning the comfort level of what you are going to put on consent, and we'll continue to, Amy's been doing a good job of tracking one that you specifically note. Any thoughts, Amy?
No, I think these are great examples of things that could be moved to consent.
A, for sure. I just wanted to make sure Commissioner Mahia, and I know she's really involved with the Burford Park project and whatnot, just to make sure she's okay with item 5B. Commissioner Mahia?
We will have public comment about this, this afternoon. So just wanted to make the board aware of that. Or we could also delay this and wait for a legal opinion.
Oh.
That was a joke, people.
All right. But I didn't hear, are you, are you comfortable having this moved to consent, item 5B?
Yeah, that's fine, that it's moved to consent.
Okay.
All right.
5C, Resolution to Call for Sealed Bids for 2025 Overlay Project.
All right, Madam Swann, County Engineer. Public Works is requesting permission from the Board of County Commissioners to call for sealed bids for the 2025 overlay project. We're planning on advertising the project. Obviously, the weather's on your drive-in today, not conducive to paving operations. So more than likely, we'll be constructing this project in the upcoming spring. Roads to be included in the contract include Marvin Road between Cairo and 22nd Avenue, 183rd Avenue between Old Highway 99 and, shoot.
Sergeant?
Sergeant, thank you, thank you, Director Walker. And Old Highway 9 between US 12 and Old Highway 99. The estimated 4.1 million construction cost will be paid for with 1.1 million of American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, funding, 1 million in REAP funding, and the remainder will come from the County Road Fund. So again, asking, requesting permission to call for sealed bids for our 2025 overlay project.
I have a question. Could you clarify the location of the Marvin Road one?
Sure. So currently out there, we're doing a construction project that goes from 22nd Avenue at the south end.
I wasn't familiar with that or the other street that you mentioned, like which, um?
Cairo. So Cairo is right next to the railroad tracks.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the north end would be 22nd Avenue, which is the south end of the project we're working on right now, just past 25th Avenue, which kind of sends you back to the Seven Oaks Elementary area.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Public Works team? Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just asked, would this be also appropriate for a consent item, given that this will ultimately come back to the board as a contract for approval once awarded?
I'm good. It's like a talk show. You get consent. What's left? What's left in departmental items?
I mean, Public Health.
One Public Health item and a hearing. That's it, right?
So is this one going consent? Any objection?
Yep. All right, consent, you're up.
All right, thank you.
Hey, Matt, you're going to be looking for more money to come in too during the delay of the rain, right? Rain delay, you'll be looking for more sources.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will have a 3:30 public hearing, which I think will be, well, we could have a lot of public comment today. I think we will on various items, but 3:30 is the set time for the public hearing on the Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program for calendar years 2025 to 2030. And just in case there's any question there, Matt, any questions on what we're addressing?
No, there's no questions, and to this point, we've not received any comment regarding the draft either.
Clerk, any issues of moving those items to consent?
Okay, so we'll have that, and then the next step on that is it just gets built into the budget? Is that?
Yes, absolutely. That's one of the conditions, is that the, in order to adopt a budget, you have to have an approved table as well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that's the end of the review of the agenda this afternoon. Proclamation and awards, Clerk of the Board.
Ms. Amy Davis, Clerk of the Board. This afternoon, we will have staff representatives from the Emergency Management in attendance to accept and present on the proclamation.
Draft is in our packet, so Commissioners, have you seen any mistakes or requests for changes? Please let the Clerk know. Any questions at this time? Nope, okay. Then we go to Advisory Boards and Commissions?
I did send an email out yesterday with some information on Advisory Boards and Commissions. We have some updates to those, so I would like to pause and bring that for discussion next week.
Can you give us just real quick what boards we're talking about?
Yeah, Fair Board, Law and Justice, SWAC, and the Ag Advisory Committee.
Okay, so you sent us an email, and then we're going to discuss it next week. It's in there, okay?
If anyone needs it resent, yeah, Amy can resend it out.
Commissioner Mahia?
Yeah, I was just going to say that the Law and Justice Council did make a recommendation. And so those recommendations are probably what's going to be discussed next week, and it was, I believe, included in the email that Amy sent.
I thought the Clerk did a good job of handing that information out. And if I remember correctly, there's two seats for like the Justice Connected Community Group seats?
Correct. They do not necessarily need to be justice-connected. So they, they reviewed all applicants with that perspective.
jotting notes on that. Is that it for Advisory Boards then, for today? Then we're now to our executive session pursuant to RCW 4230-1101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to the, to agency enforcement actions, or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party when public knowledge regarding the discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency. Shoots Estuary ILA is the topic. Approximately 15 minutes, is that accurate?
Yeah, well, we should, let me just have, we're queuing up Travis as soon as he comes. We can start, I would recommend starting the
Take a few minutes till we get to.
Okay, so it's 9:46. We'll take a 10-minute recess and fire up for any 15-minute, but that won't start until 9:55.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, we are out of executive session and we're just at the tail end of the agenda unless there's a commissioner item to be addressed.
We will.
Nope, we'll be back at 2:00 PM for our regular board meeting, so we're adjourned at this time.